Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Jason.
Hi, Jason.
Do you have some identification so we know it's you? So we don't have any.
I would say the fairly unique voice and the fact that I'll comment on everything.
Oh, God. Okay. You don't have to show any ID. Just don't comment. All righty, so I think it's eight o'clock. Terry will be a few minutes late. All right? Okay, I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So in terms of roll call, Jen Aguilar is missing. She's away and absent, not missing. And Harry Union will be here in a few minutes. He ran into traffic. And Jen, Jason Mauer will be on the phone. Okay, I had my, where's my agenda? All righty, so getting started. Just my agenda, which I just had here. I have my own here. I got it. Okay. Looking at the consent calendar, any comments? Otherwise, I'm passing it as printed. Sure.
On the wolf park thing, has L and A seen that contract?
Yes, and they did recommend it be considered by the full council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So passing it as printed, going on to communications, we have A through R. And I'm going to incorporate them into the minutes, unless we have any questions. So going on to public participation, anybody, here comes Mr. Rooney. So we're all here really except for Jen Aguilar. Okay, on to public participation, anybody have anything they would like to participate? Seeing nobody. Are you ready to do the appointments? Well, Monday night football, you know. All right. One mind, two sheets, Terry, is that better for you?
I have.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Okay, so Resolution 20-32, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tracy Cusick, Republican of 79 Gristle Road, to the Youth Commission with a term ending October 12, 2021.
Can we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Farmer Keller. Going on to discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Ms. Cusick, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Cusick has been a resident of Monroe for nine years. She's a mother of three children, have grown up in Monroe. Tracy loved raising her children in Monroe, wishes to help other youths, have the same great experience her children have had. I ask that you place the approval of this appointment on the agenda of March 19, 2020 council meeting. This appointment fills a vacant created by Athena West. I'm sorry about my breath.
All right. So we have to, any discussion on this? We didn't have to create this discussion. Anybody else have anything to say? Going on to both.
Just one question.
Yep.
Is this appointment for any of the specific requirements for a youth commission? Or is this one of the general appointment?
It is a general appointment.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, let's vote. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye, so we have an eight to zero vote, okay? Passing this motion. Mr. Rooney, on to the next one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to appoint William Holdsworth, Republican of 5 Meadow Road, as an alternate to the Board of Assessment Appeals with a term ending December 31, 2020.
Can we hear a second? Second by Mr. Reed. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Holdsworth has lived in Monroe for 45 years. William has a background in financial analysis and planning. He believes his problem-solving skills and analytical background makes him a perfect fit for the Board of Assessment Appeals. I ask that you place the approval of this appointment on the agenda for the March 9, 2020 Town Council Meeting. This is a new thing, so I'm reading it unfortunately. I don't think it needs to be read. And that's it.
Okay. Any other discussion on Mr. Holdsworth? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin is saying, do you have a background on him? I think you just gave it though.
Yeah, just a discussion.
Okay, all right. All in favor, just to that again. Okay, passes.
Aye.
Okay, so passes eight to zero. Thank you.
Madam Chair, with your permission, Mr. Holdsworth is in the audience tonight. May he swear amen.
Good, sure.
Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly consider yourselves, the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge further along your duties as an alternate on the Board of Assessment Appeals to the best of your abilities to help you out upon your journey.
I do.
Congratulations.
Okay, going on to action items. A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Health, Education, and Public Safety Matters. We have not really had a meeting. I will attend, I'll attend all the health departments, and there's a meeting Wednesday night. Okay, on to B, Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Anything, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you continue to hand this over to me, and I have no problem answering the question. We have not met. We are trying to consider a meeting. Unfortunately, with budget season and everything else going on, pretty much every night has been full except for Friday. So, for me personally, so we will organize that soon or rather later.
Thank you very much. C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and, Mrs. Martin, Park and Rec, maybe?
Madam Chair, yes, just some Park and Rec things. They announced at the meeting that the hiring for the rec supervisor was down to two people. And those two people will be interviewed, I believe, by Mr. Kellogg and Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Interim HR person. And that the summer registration is up on the website now for summer programs and concerts. August party at the lake and the lake concerts. And the Park and Rec Commission, not the Commission, the Park and Rec Department is taking applications for seasonal employees accepted now.
Okay, thank you.
Particularly if anyone has a water safety instructor.
Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did meet tonight, and almost everything that's in our business is, will be addressed.
Okay, thank you. D, Strategic Planning Committee, Mr. Scott?
Yep, so First Electman and I met last week. We met and went over for a little while some of the agenda topics that we're going to have at our next meeting. We'll be meeting on next Wednesday, a week from now, six o'clock. We'll need to go through the list of the items in the capital budget for this year's budget. We'll be reviewing those, and then we'll be taking the results from that to our next Town Council Meeting, so you'll be seeing the results of that.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, E, EMS Building Committee, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As maybe the council is aware, and some people in the audience, we did have a meeting in front of P and Z on Thursday. The findings of the P and Z Board was that there was one subject of concern with the lot. There was a slope issue that encroached within 25 feet of a property line, so we need to get a variance, but other than that, everything else looks good. That meeting, to rehear that, will be set April 2nd.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mrs. Martin?
Mr. Rooney, could I ask you, the slope issue, do you anticipate that that will delay?
Well, according to P and Z, Councilwoman Martin, they basically said that it's a very simple thing. It's a variance that is somewhat common with the extension of the parking lot and encroached on the line just a little bit. And, you know, the reaction from the board and Mr. Porter was that it's pretty much just a technicality, but, you know, who knows? You know, we'll put it together and see what happens.
And you're anticipating that at the April meeting?
April 2nd it's scheduled for, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. F, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, Mr. O'Rourke?
We have not met since our last meeting. We're scheduled to meet on the 24th.
So March 24th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Keller, First Electman's update?
Okay, passing down a couple of documents. A bunch of stuff to report to you tonight. So the first thing I wanted to just give the council a quick update on is on the coronavirus disease, while COVID-19 concerns, which obviously we understand, there's a lot of concern in the community. I want to assure everyone that we are following our existing pandemic preparedness and response plan that has been in place for many years, along with guidance from the CDC and the DPH. We have been having regular meetings with emergency management, with the Director of Health, the Superintendent of Schools. We are, we've continually expanded those meetings to involve more, more department heads and agencies as necessary. We're actually having another meeting tomorrow morning of our emergency management team. Our efforts right now are really focused on monitoring communications and agency coordination, but certainly we are planning to take other measures as they may be required. And again, it's a rapidly changing situation, so decisions will have to be made based upon the situation at the time and based upon the guidance at that time from either CDC and/or DPH, and that's what we're prepared to do. We are in regular contact with state officials. We do all calls, briefing calls with the state epidemiologists, as well as representatives from emergency management and home and security, no less than weekly. Frequently, it is more than weekly. Actually, Nancy and I and emergency management and the superintendent were on a call with the governor just around five o'clock this evening. That's when they updated us that they've, there are currently two positive cases in Connecticut, that is, out of 56 cases that have been tested by the state health department. You know, the message is that additional cases are inevitable in Connecticut. We don't really have, you know, the clinical picture is still not 100% clear, but every indication is that we're going to see a range of disease, ranging from mild, some who have no symptoms, all the way to severe disease. You know, we're being told to, you know, can think of it almost as similar to a very serious flu season. I mean, we all are used to going through flu, where there's, it can be severe illness, and there are at times fatalities, but we need to prepare as if we're having a very bad flu season. We have established an information page on the town's website. The link is there for you. It is being updated regularly. A lot of what we're putting out there is links to other sources such as CDC and DPH, because it is very important that people have consistent and accurate sources of information, and we want those from the official sources of information. Routine precautions that you would want to take, and I mean, I know it sounds almost, you know, some people think it's, it seems kind of obvious, but it's worth repeating. You know, simple things like can-washing and cough etiquette and sneeze etiquette are very important. That's what we can do to help reduce the spread of illness. At some point, there may be further recommendations. There's been, we certainly are aware that there's certain schools that are taking different actions, particularly colleges. There are, you know, there have been some indications from the state that they will be taking greater precautions on certain gatherings over 100 people. So those are recommendations that we'll have to evaluate over time. But there's no immediate mandate or requirement for any kind of cancellation. Everything is still at the local level. There is no state of emergency declared by the governor. So we continually need to just be in monitoring mode. In addition to the website, we can, you know, anyone can certainly call our health department for more information. We've also put forth, the state has a hotline, as well as an ability to text to get links to information as well. So that is the update on COVID. The second update I want to give you is on the Pepper Street reconstruction project. So we did receive an authorization to award the contract for this project as we've been anticipating. The state also provided us with a supplemental project authorization letter that revises all of their estimated construction costs. So you'll recall from the prior Town Council meetings, we had gotten an estimate that was still pending the final bids for construction of about 7.3 million, most of which is funded through grants, 10% being the town. The council subsequently authorized construction of the contract to the lowest qualified bidder, which came in at 4.7 million. Based upon the documentation we received from the state, they revised their estimate for the construction portion to reflect that bid. They've also included a 10% contingency on that. The current negotiated fees for the inspection services, which is a contract which will be forthcoming to this council, but we do have a dollar amount at this point. There's also some fees to Army Corps of Engineering and some incidentals. So that revised number, which is not, I mean, I've got to remember, there is contingency built in there, but this is the number that the state has authorized to spend. Now totals seven point, just over 7.6 million, 7,63,300. So that would bring the town's corresponding costs, or 10%, to 7,62,000. It's a $33,000 increase, but that is still well, well below the total amount that is authorized for, you know, appropriated and authorized through a prior bonding. So we are in fine shape in that regard. However, I will recommend that in the capital budget process, we do add another $500,000 under the grant funding source, so that we have allocated that additional increase that will be covered by the state and federal grants. And as I mentioned before, the other agreement for inspection services during construction, that is still under negotiation, although we do have a number, and that will come to Town Council in the near future. Next item I have for you is an update on Wheeler and 110. You'll recall that earlier this year, I wrote to the Commissioner of Department of Transportation to voice my concerns on the intersection, whereas we had, all the changes that we've made seem to have changed the nature of the incidents, but there seems to be still a large volume of those incidents. And although we seem to have addressed the optical illusion, there's something else going on there. I did receive a communication from the DOT Commissioner confirming that they conducted a field review meeting in late January, and that meeting supported the belief that it's primarily driver behavior, behavior as opposed to intersection design, that they think is contributing to the crashes. That said, I am happy to report that since a simple remedy was not apparent, the DOT has authorized a road safety assessment, which is a standardized formal safety performance exam that's conducted by an independent multidisciplinary team that will identify not just any issues, but also opportunities for any further improvements. The DOT has already engaged the Training and Technical Assistance Center from UConn and has agreed to conduct this RSA through their Connecticut Safety Circuit Rider Program. It will be done at no cost to the town, and Captain White from our police department will be in touch with UConn directly to coordinate that further. The next update I want to give you is on the Wolf Park Playground. You may have seen it already out there, but I just want to make sure that all of council is aware that consistent with the Monroe Playground Foundation, they came to us earlier in regards to their efforts to have the playground named, and they, in coordination with the Parks and Rec Commission and through suggestions from the public. And they have announced that the winning name was The Wolf's Den, which sounds good to me. So that is the, that's the name that's been selected. Next update is on budget meeting schedules. So you'll recall that we had a scheduled, one of the scheduled meetings was the joint meeting of Board of Finance, which was on the calendar for April 7. I'm asking, or I asked Board of Finance, I'm asking this body as well, that we accommodate a change in that meeting date. The reason being is one of our town officials is receiving a very prestigious award that evening, and I know that there are multiple department heads, the least being the fire service chiefs, that will likely, that I know will want to be in attendance for that award presentation, so I'm asking so that we have department heads available, we change that meeting. In speaking with the Board of Finance Chairman, Mike Mangels, he suggested moving it to the April 9 meeting, which is the one following. So I have reflected that in the revised schedule that I handed out. In line with that, as Councilmember Scott had mentioned earlier, I wanted to get you a little bit more specificity in how I think we should proceed, or my proposal of proceeding with the capital budget review process. So for the current year, what Tony and I have discussed is, as he mentioned, we'll be having a meeting next week with Strategic Planning. At that meeting, they can review all the current capital plan and all of the project submission forms that have been submitted, and they would be able to, or I'm suggesting, they would be able to make some preliminary determination on recommendations to either include it in the capital budget going forward with no need for a department head to come in and discuss it further. There certainly are projects that would fit that category, I would assume, like Pepper Street, right? I mean, it's already approved. You don't need to have someone come in. Second option would be to consider to include in the budget, but to have the department head or project sponsor come in and discuss it further. And last but not least would be deciding to recommend the project either be deferred or rejected as submitted because it simply doesn't, for whatever reason, it's just something that SBC doesn't think should even be pursued at this time. My recommendation would be that after SBC completes that, that at your regular Town Council meeting on March 23, that their recommendations be brought forth to the full council to gain consensus on those recommendations, and that at that meeting, you could make your final project list that you would like to see reviewed, which would then occur on the April 9 meeting, which I just referenced earlier, which would be the joint meeting of Board of Finance, where Board of Finance, I know, wants this council's input and vote on the projects being prioritized based upon the appetite funding that Board of Finance is recommending. So that's my proposal for getting us through this. Oh, sorry. So that's my proposal for getting through the capital portion of the current budget season. To go further, I'd like to make a, I want to make a recommendation, something else I discussed with Tony. Going forward, I'd like to transition or evolve this further so that the capital conversation is not something that is primarily done just during the budget preparation process, and so the timing more dovetails in with the review of the operations budget, excuse me, as opposed to trying to do both efforts simultaneously. So in the future, I am proposing that the Strategic Planning Committee have a quarterly capital project review meeting, whether that's at one of their existing meetings as an agenda item or just a separate meeting, it's kind of irrelevant, but that they, on a quarterly basis, hold a capital project review meeting. And my recommendation that those meetings be held in October, January, April, and July. At each quarterly meeting, they would review capital and progress, and we would entertain submissions of new projects at those meetings for SBC consideration, and then also, so they would vet it, they would also look towards programming that in a particular fiscal year in the five-year capital plan. We should be looking at projects well ahead and not, you know, obviously emergencies and last-minute things will come up, but I think the less we do, we're doing kind of at the last minute, so to speak, the better. So that would mean at the, and then also at the October meeting, that in theory would be, that would propose to be the last SBC meeting for that year's upcoming budget process for a submission of a new project, other than emergencies. So that in October, SBC has the full palette of what is under consideration. That would give them then in the July quarterly meeting, they would not entertain new projects for the upcoming budget season, but they could finalize and prioritize what's out there and report that back to the full council for review and consideration, either in January after that meeting or immediately following in February. So that is designed to be in advance ideally, or perhaps, you know, simultaneous to the preparation of the budget that I would prepare to the council. So basically, the idea is to have capital more vetted, if not, you know, well underway of being locked down before we get to the point where you're even deliberating on the budget from the operations side. So that's that. The next item, an update is on the roads. So there was a request to get some updates on roads. DPW is still refining the priorities and paving list for the fiscal year 2021 season. It's typically done after fresh road inspections are conducted in the spring, but I have asked them to start working on a preliminary report, and we'll get that done. But in the interim, we certainly can provide a report on what has been completed. So in the current fiscal year, 1920, you have a list of the miles that were completed as reported in the budget process on page three. Continued on the next page is the routine maintenance roads that have also been completed this year. And then on page five is the road work that has started in the current fiscal year but is still in progress. Not that others can't be added, but those are ones that work has already begun in this fiscal year. And that is my report.
Before we move on?
Yep.
Mr. First Electman, if you could just email that vast part of the report about the roads out?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get everything in the, we'll get everything in the package, yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, so we're going on to unfinished.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. First Electman, I had asked, I believe at the last meeting, about doing some research with the town attorney about putting a ballot question?
Yes, so Lieutenant Frank did ask me to relay to you that he is working on it, and he will have it in time for the, your budget meeting on Thursday.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, going on to unfinished business. A, Resolution 20-30 to consider and act upon a resolution regarding acceptance of Trailside Drive and Birdseye Road as public roads. Mr. O'Rourke?
I will introduce the following resolution, a resolve that the resolution entitled, "Resolution to Accept Trailside Drive and Birdseye Road as Public Roads and Move For Its Adoption." Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Monroe hereby accepts Trailside Drive and Birdseye Road as more particularly described on the Schedule A attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, subject to the receipt and acceptance by the First Electman on behalf of the town, of the following. One, a fully executed warranty deed in proper form conveying title to the roads, to the town. And two, a fully executed road maintenance agreement with appropriate bond. Be it further resolved that the First Electman on behalf of the town is hereby authorized to execute said road maintenance agreement and any other agreements or consents which may be reasonable and necessary to secure, consummate the acceptance of the roads as set forth herein.
Can we hear a second to this motion?
Before a second. I think the whole thing would need to be read. Can we, can you just put it into, have it waived?
I was going to have it waived, but I thought.
Yeah, because I think it has to start from Resolution 20-30, a resolution to put a whole thing to be read.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
I'll second that.
Second, okay. Discussion? No. All right, voting on waiving the reading passes, okay, would you, Mr. Mauer?
Yeah, aye.
It passes eight.
Sorry, it was on mute.
Okay, no comment. Okay, eight, um, it passes eight to zero. So now, Mr. O'Rourke, you've read them, but we'll read them again.
No, we're good now, yeah.
Now it's okay?
Yep.
Do we have, we had a sec, have done it a second?
I'll second the actual motion itself.
Discussion, Mr. Keller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you recall from the last meeting, this is a topic that we knew was kind of coming down the pike. The Planning and Zoning Commission has provided their required statement of satisfactory completion of these roads, based upon the town engineers sign off that they are ripe for acceptance. The town attorney has reviewed all the documentation. You'll see, obviously, we have a slightly more detailed resolution prepared that was based upon the town attorney's recommendation, and at this point, we feel that everything is in order but for the couple of items that the town attorney felt could be a conditional, you know, the council could pass a resolution and have a conditional acceptance on those items.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just, this was discussed in LNA, and went through it in detail, and it passed to go to council.
Okay, so for a vote, all in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. Okay, going on to, now we're doing new business, but we're gonna skip to the Health Department resolution, because Mrs. Kellogg is here. So, "Resolution Regarding Health Department Fee Schedule." Mr. O'Rourke?
I will introduce the following resolution, resolve, the resolution entitled "Health Department Fee Schedule and Move for Its Adoption." Resolution number 20-36, resolve that the Town Council approves the proposed Health Department fee schedule to be effective July 1st, 2020, as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicellag. Okay, our discussion, Ken first, Mr. Kellogg first, then--
Thank you. So, as we do every year, the Board of Health and Health Director makes their recommendations for any revisions to their fee schedule, consistent with the ordinance, I'm sorry. There are only a few minor changes being recommended this year, and those are based upon not only the review of our current fees, but also doing some comparison with nearby communities. There's a slight increase of $5 on temporary events, there's a $20 increase in a V-100A application review, pool licensing going up, there is a slight increase of $25 to late, the late fees for renewal of both food establishments and salons, but I want to expand a little bit upon that. Currently, our fee schedule, you'll see, is a $50, but it is per business day, and I did receive some concerns in regards to that, and in evaluating further some neighboring communities that I asked our Health Director to look into, it seems that while late fees are very common, and they make obvious, for obvious reasons, the assessing the fee per business days late is very uncommon, and the only other one we could find was Trumbull, which I believe is likely a holdover from the former, excuse me, Trumbull Monroe Health District, which obviously, as you know, was dissolved some time ago. So, in that regard, we feel we certainly, you know, the late fee would allow some incentive to be on time, it would recover some costs of additional administration, and then certainly, after a grace period, if they continue to not renew, they simply would not be licensed, they would no longer be allowed to operate. So, Director of Health is here, if you have any additional questions. Other than that, I want to thank you, the Board of Health, for going through the process and reviewing it again as the year over year.
Okay, Mr. Reed first?
Should we discuss this in LNA as well? Mr. Kellogg clarified that seemed reasonable, so this did pass resolution to, consensus to go to council.
Okay, any other questions? Anything you'd like to add, Ms. Brock? Okay, all right. So, for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes eight, thank you, passes eight to zero. Going on to the next resolution, so now we're going back to A, Resolution 20-34, to Consider and Act Upon a Resolution Regarding Consent, Resignation, and Appointment Agreement with Principal Financial Group. Mr. O'Rourke?
I will introduce the following resolution, resolve that the resolution entitled, entitled "Consent, Resignation, and Appointment Agreement with the Principal Financial Group and Move for Its Adoption." Resolution 20-34, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the consent, resignation, and appointment agreement in any associated documents by and between Principal Financial Group for the Town's Retirement Income Plan and Non-Pension Post-Employment Benefits Trust Agreement.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
So--
Formicellag.
I'm sorry, Mr. Formicellag.
So, as you know, so we have a custodial agreement with Wells Fargo, they hold the assets of our pension and our OPEC plans. We were advised some time ago that Principal Financial Group has acquired the, some of the business of Wells Fargo, specifically their institutional retirement trust business, business, excuse me. So, again, similar to the transaction that was done with FIA, this is not going to really change anything in terms of the service provided or the fees, however, the Town does have to consent to it. This was discussed at both the pension and OPEC meetings as well, at the same time we discussed the other matter, and it's been reviewed by the town attorney. I simply ask for your authorization for me to execute this consensus.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We discussed this in LNA and it passed with consensus to come to Town Council.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this? Otherwise, we can, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Now it passes, it passes seven to zero, 'cause Mr. Reed had to leave. Okay, thank you. Going on to B, Resolution 20-35, to Consider and Act Upon a Resolution Regarding the Fiscal Year 2020 Radio Community Service Grant for WMNR. Mr. O'Rourke?
I will introduce the following resolution, resolve that the resolution entitled "Resolution Regarding WMNR CPB Grant and Move for Its Adoption." Resolution 20-35, resolve that the 2020 Radio Community Service Grant Agreement and Certification of Eligibility dated October 1st, 2019, by and between the Corporation for Public Broadcasting CPB and the Town of Monroe, and WMNR, MNR FM are hereby approved, and that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman, and Kurt Anderson, General Manager of WMNR FM, are authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the Town of Monroe as licensee, and WMNR FM as grantee, respectively.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicellag. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
So, this is a grant that comes before you every year, this is the same, you know, essentially the exact same grant that you see every year. This year, there's an $84,000 opportunity, it's something that obviously WMNR counts on as part of their budget. There's really nothing new about this, this is something that's, that Kurt had brought to my attention a while ago, we have plenty of time to execute it, but he did ask that we complete it by April, so we have our, the opinion from the town attorney, I'd ask that we just move this forward so we can finalize it and access the funds for WMNR.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, we discussed this during LNA, it passed with consensus.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Otherwise, voting, all in favor of this motion? It passes--
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Aye.
Oh, Kevin's there too, okay, sorry. So now we have eight to zero. He walked out. All right, on to the next one, Resolution 20-37, to Consider and Act Upon Resolution Regarding DOT Drug and Alcohol Clearinghouse Transportation Program Management Services Agreement with Gregory &amp; Howe. Mr. O'Rourke?
I will introduce the following resolution, resolve that the resolution entitled "Resolution Regarding DOT Drug and Alcohol Clearinghouse Transportation Program Management Services Agreement with Gregory &amp; Howe and Move for Its Adoption." Resolution 20-37, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the First Selectman of Monroe, is execute, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the DOT Drug and Alcohol Clearinghouse Transportation Program Management Services Agreement and any associated documents by and between Gregory &amp; Howe, Inc., for the Commercial Driver's License Drug and Alcohol Clearinghouse Program.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicellag. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you. So, there's a new federal mandate that requires, well, let me step back a little bit, so we have certain employees in Public Works that have commercial driver's licenses, they are required to undergo random drug and alcohol screening as a condition of that CDL license. The federal government has added a new program, which is a clearinghouse, which would require us to check and/or report results to that clearinghouse. We currently have a company that does the random drug screening for us, Gregory &amp; Howe, they are offering to provide the Town with this new service to basically manage the clearinghouse program for us. There's a memo here from Mike Brown that explains it more fully, and he's here this evening as well, if you have any further questions. But essentially, this is an agreement that would allow Gregory &amp; Howe to do this, and the, the costs are included already in the fiscal year 21 budget. Mike had anticipated this when he provided his budget request to me. So that said, also, I'll just add that, obviously, the town attorney provided an opinion as well, which you have in your package, so I ask that we move this forward.
Madam Chair, LNA has reviewed this, and it passed with consensus.
Okay, any other discussion? Otherwise, voting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it passes eight to zero. Lastly, E, Resolution 20-38, to Consider and Act Upon a Resolution Regarding, Dash, 8-24, Municipal Referral for the Municipal Lease and Utilization of a Wireless Telecommunication Tower at 345 Van Hill Road. Mr. O'Rourke?
I will introduce the following resolution, resolve that the resolution entitled "Resolution Regarding 8-24 Municipal Referral for the Municipal Lease and Utilization of the Wireless Telecommunications Tower at 345 Van Hill and Move for Its Adoption." Resolution 20-38, resolve that in accordance with the Connecticut General Statute 8-24, the Monroe Town Council hereby refers the proposal for the municipal lease and utilization of the wireless telecommunications tower at 345 Van Hill Road to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and report.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Formicellag. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you. So, as you will recall, there have been some prior discussions regarding the construction of a new telecommunications tower. This is in anticipation of the existing sell-on wheels, affectionately referred to as a cow, that was put there by AT&amp;T in December of 2012, that's been sitting in front of Juan Hall's school. That is there on a, I think it's on its, I don't know how many extensions now, but that does need to be removed. The final extension, I believe, expires the end of June 21, so it does need to go away. That cow does provide limited wireless service already to a neighborhood, including, you know, that's the neighborhood of the schools in that vicinity, so its removal will have an immediate impact. We have a proposal from ARX Wireless to construct a new tower that will allow multiple carriers to go on the tower, which would improve service throughout the neighborhood and at the schools, and because it would be proposed on town property, it would also have the ability to generate revenue to the Town. We are also very interested in providing, locating some of our own public safety communications equipment on the tower as well. Our, we've had discussions with our, with our communications vendor, and there is a benefit to the Town by relocating some equipment there. So, in the past, the prior proposals included construction at 54 Jackie Hollow Road behind the existing firehouse and EMS facility. Those plans resulted in a tower site that was in extreme, extremely close proximity to the adjoining property owners, literally in its, in their backyards. There were other proposals, which were much closer to the, to schools, Juan Hall and Jackie Hollow, so in response to my request to find an area that was appropriate and least intrusive as possible, there's a proposal that they have to locate a tower approximately 400 feet to the northwest of the Chalk Hill building. We do have here this evening a representative from ARX, Dave Archibald, who is here and will be, we'd like to allow him to give you a presentation in this regard. You'll, you'll see in that presentation, I know you have in your handout a photographic simulation, a balloon test, that was conducted at my request so that both this council and residents would have a visual representation of that proposed tower. So at this time, all I, all we, all of that is being asked of this council is to consider the 824 referral to planning and zoning, which, as you are aware, would be required for both the Town to entertain and to the lease, a future lease agreement, as well as the utilization of the tower itself. I realize in my package, you may or may not have a copy of a lease agreement, you can ignore that, that's an old document, if you do have that, I'm not sure if it's just in my package or not.
We did have--
Yeah, you can ignore that. This is not the, this is an older document, which I didn't realize, it was probably in my administrative staff's package for this, so that is not being entertained this evening, that will be at a future meeting. And at this point, I'd like to hand it off to David and go through your presentation.
My name's David R. Shamble, thank you all for letting us be here tonight. I am in kind of two capacities tonight, one is, I am the owner of the company that does the USET analysis, the balloon test, the photo sims, and I am also representing ARX, as they need somebody that they do to help them out here tonight. Mr. Kellogg really went through a good majority of the presentation, and again, anything that we're, we're doing has to go through the zoning process, so again, we're just looking to get the referral part portion going. ARX is a fairly local tower company, working out of Connecticut here. They are trying to, as was stated, replace the cow, sell-on wheels, which is a box truck with an antenna and a generator next to it, with a permanent kind of a facility, back in the woods a little bit, much, much less visible, and in doing that, replacing or placing a bunch of the Town's equipment on the tower. And AT&amp;T, as we show here, has shown interest in being on the tower since their cow has to be gone, they'll actually end up giving them considerably better coverage than what they were given now. Little explanation about the plots that are coming, the diagrams, as you'll see here in just a minute, the RF plots. This darker green out here is the coverage that exists with the existing sites, and this here is the cow site, the star, and that light green is where it's covered. And that's with the cow decommissioned, you can get, you can click back and forth, you can see you lose considerable coverage there. And then, by adding the permanent site, you can see that that green area actually fills a lot more in here, fills further out into the neighborhoods this way, and this way, and further down the road this way. So it, it will help AT&amp;T considerably covering that area in a permanent basis. I don't believe I have plots for the Town's equipment and how that coverage will be helped, but you guys can talk to your guys about that.
That's forthcoming.
This here shows the existing towers that we could find, how far they are from the proposed site, what type of a tower they are, and the latitude longitude of them. Most of the four of these are in Monroe, one is in Newtown, and they're street addresses, and you can see them located in several places. All right. This is a sketch, or a lease exhibit, as it's known, for where the site, how the site would be built. Right over roughly here is where the sell-on wheels is located currently, and obviously very visible along the road from the front of the school, and it's looking to be relocated as a permanent site, back behind the school and indoors. So there'll be essentially no visibility of the base equipment, depending on how close the trees are here, you might see from right in this area, right where my little pointer is, you might see through some trees to see the front of the, the compound right from there, but certainly nowhere off the property. nowhere off the property. Typical site is developed with a access road that comes in, a one-car turnaround and/or parking space, a fenced-in area with the tower in the middle. Equipment would be placed in different locations as the carriers came. They'd bring their own equipment, and they would place it around the center of the tower. Cabling typically goes in at the base, goes up through the middle, so you don't see the cabling, and it comes out, there's ports at every level where you can put antennas, so it comes out right behind the antennas, and then the antennas are up there on the platform. This is a very typical view of a tower. I personally don't like, like these views, because towers are never actually built with four antennas, nothing else, perfectly aligned, one underneath the other. Every carrier has different needs, and their antennas are different sizes and face different directions. So, even if three more carriers were to come tomorrow, it wouldn't look exactly like that, but that's just showing that, you know, everyone would be looking to build at a different level. And I believe that the town is getting the top, not a hundred percent sure about that, but I believe the town would be on the top or second to top. And that's not showing, the town's equipment is not showing there. As you can see here, what we were talking about, the eight twenty-four, we're looking for the referral to move to the P and Z. We would come back for that, back to the town council for lease approval after that, and upon leasing, we perform all the rest of the things that we need to do, where it starts getting very expensive for ARX to have the surveys and the engineers and the wetlands and the FAA and the deep and ship bow and all of that type of stuff done. And then, the photo simulations, we did back on eleven fifteen. It says here, new hundred and sixty-foot tower. At the time, we were hired, that's what they were thinking of doing. With the town's equipment on there, it needs to be a hundred and seventy foot, so the actual simulations are about ten feet off. The blue line shows where our field tech has driven, once the balloon was up in the air. They drove everywhere where you can see a blue line. Where the dots are, are where photos were taken from. The green dots are where the balloon was truly visible. The yellow ones were where they were visible, but looking through bushes, trees, and things that would make it more difficult to see. And then the red ones are where it was not visible. So, we also, when we do this, we have a program that will predict where these things are visible and not visible that we use, and then, when we come out and do the balloons, we make sure we check all those places along with all the other places, but it just helps us to make sure that we don't miss any big sections. We are not looking to show you every square foot where it is visible, but give you a good general idea of its visibility and what it would look like in that area. So, all the, all the spots are numbered, one through, on this one, I think we're up to twenty-something, but they're numbered in distance from the sun. So that's why they look a little mis, misorganized, but the closest is one, the furthest would be twenty. So photo one, where it's green, the balloon is clearly visible, and we put a tower in there to show from that standing in that place, that's about what you would see. We actually use a three-D model that we put into the picture as opposed to just photoshopping a picture of a tower in. And by using the balloon and knowing the data down here, which our cameras automatically take and automatically focus to the right focal length, we can take that three-D model and give you a very accurate size of the antennas and tower in that location. And we can go through these. Photo two, uh, from this location, point six, one, six miles away, that's about what it would look like. You can see that, you can see it in, into the trees here, it's not just behind all the trees. It, uh, does come down, you will see it as the trees up there, they're in the front. Could not see it from here, but just a short distance away, four, you can see the balloon right up here, and that's why we call this, uh, obscured visibility. You can see it if you're looking for it, but really, with the color of the sky happening to be here today in a standard tower, it's nearly invisible behind the trees. Again, you can clearly see the balloon here, and photo five, and there's the tower. And where, where the balloon is not visible, say up here, balloon not visible, these are all locations, we can go back if you'd like. So, doesn't say it's not visible, and if you look real close, right there, you can see the balloon. So, again, once the tower's there with the color of the sky this particular day, it's near invisible. And again, we don't normally put red arrows on our pictures, because there's not one there normally floating up there, but the balloon is very hard to see, and over a half mile away. The balloon is three foot across, so when we put the sims in, we make the sims about four times the width of the balloon, depending on what is actually planned. It's anywhere from ten to twelve foot is a typical width of an array. And again, perfect sky color for, for this, but the coloring just makes it very difficult to see at that distance. And I think that's all the ones that were visible. And we can go back to this page here, you can see. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
This is Martin. Um, in the back of Chalk Hill, well, a couple of questions. In the back of Chalk Hill are two town things, there's the soccer, there's the soccer field back there, and, uh...
Um, oh, sorry, are you taking a picture? I think you can get a copy of this.
Can you have a copy? Um, and there's also a, a nature trail that comes off the back there. How close it, I'm not very good.
Are you talking about this soccer field?
Yes. Yes.
Well, you can see the distance to the soccer field. I'm not sure where the, where the path is, so I can't answer that at all. But I would say from the edge of the trees to the site, it is probably anywhere between fifty and eighty feet, a hundred feet maybe, tops.
So you're talking about the field?
From the field right there.
Yeah, there was a prior location which was closer to the field, which I did not, we discussed moving away from. And in my conversation with Keith, he said they were not near the nature trail at all.
Okay. I don't know where the nature trail is.
I specifically had asked that.
They're not, okay.
Not interfere with the nature trail. He said it would not, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Is there any sound with it at all? Like, is there any noise?
The actual tower antennas and radio equipment? No. There is sound. Typically, there's a standby generator that will kick on for a short period of time, like once every other week, or depending on what they set the schedule, just to circulate the fuel and that kind of thing. And that can be scheduled to go any time of day, so that, you know, make it at noon when it's not going to bother anybody, or something like that. The other thing is, they have air conditioning units that make the power the same kind of noise as a window unit in a house would make.
Anything else? So, we're voting on this proposal, to send it to... Okay, so all in favor of this proposal?
Before we go on, just a couple of quick comments, not questions, but before the selectmen refer to the siting council, and just from my experience working with the siting council, having the benefit of kind of deciding where things are on our own, having this on municipal land where there could be possible revenue generation in the future, is very beneficial. One, because the siting council will pass it at a much quicker rate, and two, if we don't have a plan, they'll make the plan, and we won't get a say in.
Yeah. Thank you, Jason, for my, I did go through that with LNA, and I certainly concur with that, I think Jason's correct. If we, you know, the siting coun, there's clearly a need in this area, so the siting council, I think, would approve something, so it would be beneficial to do it in a format that would be, have some ancillary benefits in terms of...
Okay. So, we're voting, all in favor?
Aye.
Is Kevin?
Aye.
So it passes eight to zero. Thank you. Going on to second public participation. Thank you, sir. Anybody have second public participation? No. I need a vote for a, I need a motion for a German.
Motion to German.
A motion by Terry Rooney, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formacalla. Thank you very much. Next meeting is March...
Have a good evening, all.
Good evening. See you Thursday.
Two oh four.
Two oh four.
Tonight?
Okay, I'll touch wood.
What, yes, the job meeting?
Yes.
What, what show we're seeing?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Terry's not spending...
What?
It's thirty-two oh four.
Two oh four.